All right, I called for order the city, the meeting for the City Council of Lake Mills of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Excuse me, a roll call, please, not a vote.
Ms. Quinno?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Breaking up bad. Was that me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here.
Perfect. Mr. Frich?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, for those that can rise, please stand and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get going on here, I just one little thing I wanted to mention. For all of the City Council members, except for Ms. Quinno, your Granicus may be, password may be expiring next month, so do some checks on that at the end of this beginning next month before the meeting, just to make sure that before the next meeting, you're able to get in, and if you have any problems, get a hold of Dave.
Okay.
Okay. Item four, correction and or approval is council minutes of January sixth, I'm sorry, January fifth, my glasses on. Twenty twenty.
I move the approval of the minutes of January fifth.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vicky seconded.
Who was that? Was that Vicky?
That was Vicky.
You weren't here for that.
But she can second it.
You weren't here for that, were you, Vicky?
Oh, that's right, I wasn't, sorry.
I'll second it.
Yeah. Yep, so.
I would throw my second.
Okay, Diane's a second. And let's get the roll call vote, please.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Jane?
We can't hear you, Vicky.
Yep.
It's Jane. Thank you. Ms. Quinno?
I abstain.
Thank you. Motion passed four zero.
Network remnants tonight. All right, item five, correspondence. We'll start down the list. Diane, do you have anything?
Um, some questions about our last meeting from constituents, which I cleared up, and other than that, nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Frich, do you have anything?
No.
Uh, let's see here, Ms. Schmidt?
Can you hear me?
No, we can't.
Sure can.
Can you hear me? Okay, I had some questions.
Yep.
From a constituent about one of the public hearings today, and I also had a comment from someone about, instead of doing a Santa Claus, why not consider a gingerbread man? And I responded, well, we could also do a Santa Claus, I mean, a snowman in the park instead of a Santa Claus. Just something to think about.
I'll pass that on to the people that are working on it. Gingerbread man, you said, and a snowman, right?
Yeah.
All right.
We could have a group of different subjects.
No, it's too expensive. Sorry. Well, we barely got the Santa up. The insurance.
All right, let's move on.
More.
All right, let's move on. Do you have anything, Ms. Quinno?
Um, I had the same correspondence as Vicky, so no, nothing new.
All right, thank you, and for those of you watching online, Ms. Quinno is our new City Council representative, which we're thankful to have on board, so thank you for being here. I had some of the same questions concerning our meeting last two weeks ago, and I hope they've been answered to the satisfaction of the constituents. That's all I had. All right, item six, questions and public comments. The public is encouraged to address the council this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until the hearing, and we have a few of those tonight. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order, the state's open meeting law discourages actions of council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address from starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided if you're here in the audience. For those that are attending online or from home, please type your name and address in the chat feature on the eight-by-eight console. Do we have, I'll go to the audience here, do we have anybody here in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, not seeing anybody move, we'll go to the folks online. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on anything that is not part of a public hearing?
It's just us, Mike. It's just city staff and council online.
Okay. Okay. All right, then we will move on to the city manager's report.
I assume you said city manager's report.
Mike? Are you getting that he's really happy as well?
Yeah, his stuff is really going slow. I tried to shut my camera off, so see if he could speed up.
Who's this guy? Really slow?
You are. We can't hear you.
Mike? Okay.
Well, let's see if we can get that addressed. Mr. Wilkie, he called for the city manager's report.
All right. Um, I have the December general fund check register, the December utility check register, and the monthly PD reports attached. I have nothing else to comment on tonight. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't have any.
I don't either.
I do not.
Nope.
All right. Then I'm done with my report.
Was there any questions at all?
No.
That was all copacetic.
I didn't have any other questions either, so, okay. All right, so we move on to the acceptance of the minutes of the public's, Public Works Board of October thirteenth, twenty twenty, and the Joint Rock Lake Committee of December first, twenty twenty, they'll go on, the record is written. Move this on to council business. A board appointment, City Council Representative Michelle Quinno to the folks board. I'm making the appointment, and I would like to get a motion of approval or a motion of adoption.
So moved.
Thank you, Diane, is there a second? Thank you, Doug.
Second.
Yep, got it, let's call a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
I abstain.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
All right, thank you, Michelle, you're now part of the Parks Board.
Thank you.
Do they have a meeting this month yet?
Tomorrow.
I think tomorrow.
Okay, there you go. Yep.
Uh, council business nine B, discussion decision on accepting the donation of five thousand dollars to the City of Lake Mills for all uses other than economic development. Could I get that motion title read, please?
City Council Motion twenty-one dash one dash two dash one, accepting the donation of five thousand dollars to the City of Lake Mills for all uses other than economic development.
Folks, a motion of adoption?
I'll make a motion to approve. I beat you.
Make that. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Doug. I think this is in Mr. Wilkie's hands, correct? Do you want to give us all a little insight onto this?
And this is the cash donation?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, we received a five thousand dollar cash donation, and Betsy could speak to it as well as I can, and she may want to. It just came in with a very minimal specification, is listed in the agenda item, that it's not for economic development. I didn't make a big deal of it, it's not like a lot of things that we end up having to maintain or having to figure out what we're going to use it for, five thousand dollars cash, for anything other than economic development, has got a lot of uses that are beneficial to the city. I think my recommendation is to move it to the library endowment fund, but that's just a recommendation, at this point, there's nothing there other than the fact that we accept the cash donation and take it for it.
What about using it to put in the band shelter fund?
It's up to you guys, I'm just.
Because as budgets get tighter, it's going to get harder to find money to do that, and it's always going to have to have some upkeep.
Are you recommending amendment to this to place it more specifically?
I was going to say, I, does it have the library? I have trouble reading sometimes some of these.
It does not. It is clearly just to be deposited for future debate. At this point in time, we're just trying to get it into a fund, and get it into the account, accept it, say thank you. At some future point, you guys can decide which direction you want to go.
Well, could we?
Or you can do it tonight.
We could do it tonight. Well, right now, we have to put money for the band shelter in the regular budget every year, right?
Uh, we haven't put money in for the band shelter in a number of years.
It's time. I think that's where it should go. But that's up to me, you, I mean, that's just me.
I would wait until you heard from Rob.
Okay.
Just because how he would use it on the band shelter in comparison to what the other groups are doing may be an important conversation. So, I just, at this point in time, there's nothing there other than to deposit it in a city account, hold it, and you guys can have that debate and run it past the appropriate people and see what you want to do.
May I ask a question?
Yep.
I know, that was a question in and of itself, I apologize. What, um, what kind of accounts do we have to choose from, Steve?
We, we really don't, um, the accounts are like the cemetery one and the library one, those are the only endowment funds we have. But you could designate it for a specific use, you could drop it into the general fund and designate it for a special use to go into like a capital budget account. And then we would spend it on that type of item. So it's, it's a little bit different in that if we dropped it into a fund, it would be like the library endowment fund, but if we decide to use it for like the band shelter, it would go into the capital budget, and it would be designated specifically for that type of use.
Well, I agree with what you said before, maybe we should talk with staff, see what their thoughts are too, but you already heard from me, so.
Well, could we have a report back by, in one or two council, or maybe three council meetings in the future?
So it doesn't get lost, right?
Yeah, no, that's no problem. I, um, I guess, you know, you guys send me emails on what you think would be an appropriate use, and then I'll start asking around and seeing what people think. I know everybody wants money, so that's not a problem. How it gets used, though, I mean, I know that we put a lot of money into the band shelter in the last couple of years, as well as did a private group, and so I'm not sure what needs to be done at the band shelter anymore. Obviously, I don't know, that would be a good question, not have to run by Rob. I know that the library endowment fund is, you know, way short of what it's going to take to build a new library, so those are, that's an option. You know, if you want to use it for fixing the composting site, or, you know, those are all, if you send it to me, I'll check and figure out how we can best use it in one of those categories.
Does the donor want any kind of notoriety?
No. They want to be anonymous.
And there was no further direction?
No further direction.
It certainly is a generous offer, and we appreciate it.
Yes. We thank them.
Yes. So do we need, we have a motion and a second, right?
Yep.
Yep, yep. And if we're going to just pass this, then we have to make sure it comes back up for us for tracking purposes, to make sure we can, if they do come back and want to know what it was spent on, we can share that with anonymous donors. But that doesn't have to be resolved right now, is what I'm saying. So if we're ready.
But can it be, can staff, can staff, um, with the intent, that we pass the motion with the intent that we'll get, return to it in, uh, two or three council sessions or next session, I don't know. What's your choice?
Should we put a date on it?
Yeah, a date would be good, and I'm going to say again.
What about a month from now, which is two council meetings?
Yeah.
Is that the sixteenth, sixteenth of February?
Yeah, yes.
To have it on the agenda with proposals.
Or, or recommendation from staff?
Yeah, recommendations, proposals from the staff, where, where it would be best used. Right now, it'll go into the general fund?
Yes. We'll designate it, but it'll be in the general fund.
I'll make amendment to the motion that we put this on the second meeting in February to be talked about again.
I second.
Thank you, Diane and Michelle. Let's vote on the motion, on the amendment.
As amendment, let me amend it.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
My understanding of that was.
The amendment.
My, my, yeah, that was just the amendment.
That was the amendment.
Yep, yep, now we need to vote on the motion as amended.
Right.
Ms. Schmidt?
Go ahead, yep, thank you.
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
No. Sorry, folks, I, I lost my Wi-Fi connection on my.
Well, keep going, we can hear you, keep going.
Yeah, I know, I just don't have a copy of the agenda with my Wi-Fi dumped on this, too.
Oh, he can't see the agenda.
Yep.
Well, we can help you with that. Okay, so what's next?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Tell your lifesaver. What a meeting today. Next thing is item C, discussion decision on accepting the donation from Enbridge. Can I get that title read on that, please?
City Council Motion twenty-one dash one dash two dash two, accepting the donation from Enbridge of the 2012 Chevrolet pickup truck, bus recall, and a tow and gate for use to the fire department.
Okay, do we have a motion of adoption for this, uh, man, I just can't see it. Do we have a motion of adoption?
I'll make a motion to approve. Motion twenty-one, one, two, two.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. My Wi-Fi just clicked back, so I can read the motion information. Okay, perfect, we have a, we have the motion and a second for motion twenty-one dash one dash two dash two. Who would like to speak to this, Steve or Betsy, whoever's best prepared? It looks like we're basically replacing an old, older truck with a newer one.
Yes, we received a donation from Enbridge of a 2012 truck that replaced a significantly older seventy-nine truck. They are now, they've given the seventy-nine truck to the fire, or to the Parks Department, and they are going to use, they are going to fix this truck up and use it. They're going to sell the snowplow wing and the liftgate and use that to put lights and decals and things and radios into the truck, so. And they have nice pictures of the truck there, so you can look at that and see what they have. I imagine that it's a utility truck, they use it for getting out into difficult areas where fire, where big trucks have problems going, and they outfit it to haul certain types of specialized equipment. So, that's a, it's a benefit to them, and they would appreciate the donation, and would like the council to accept it.
Looks like a good deal.
Yeah, so I am seeing the replacement of an older vehicle, and it's just going to be maintenance that we're going to have to deal with from here on out, which we were already dealing with. The only thing that caught me, as funny as we're talking about donating the older one to the Parks Department, is that replacing something in the Parks Department, or is that going to be another vehicle? Because then there, it's going to add to their budget for maintenance.
Um, the Parks Department generally has quite a slew of older trucks that they use for part-time summer employees. The regular employees, there are trucks set aside for them, but this is just going into that collection. It doesn't take a lot of maintenance, just basically gas and their mechanic keeping it up and running. It generally replaces a truck that is in a pretty severe condition. For seventy-nine, this one's not in too bad a condition. Pretty much had it at the fire department inside the building, and got used for very specialized applications. So, yeah, it, it didn't add any significant cost. In fact, I would, I would say it probably reduced costs in the Parks Department. And it's always a benefit to be able to have the summer employees be able to get around to different places without spending a lot of time chauffeuring them.
So it sounds like they are getting rid of one, most likely.
Most likely, yeah. I won't guarantee it, because they, they go through those trucks pretty fast down there.
Yeah. Okay. Was there any other questions from the other city council members?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the roll call vote, please.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Frich?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Thank you, Misty. Item D, Resolution twenty-one dash four, Arbor Day Proclamation. Could you read that resolution, please, Misty?
Resolution twenty-one dash four, Arbor Day Proclamation.
Okay. Do we have a motion of adoption for Resolution twenty-one dash four?
Don't move.
Thank you, Doug, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, that was Ms. Quinno, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Steve, do you have anything you want to mention on this?
Yeah, historically, this is probably the first time any of you have seen this. We are a part of Tree City, and Tree City has always had us designate a Arbor Day. Usually, they allow you to do it in one resolution, so our resolution was done twenty years ago. They now have gone to a process where they want the resolution designating Arbor Day done every year. So this is the first time you, vast majority of you have seen something like this. Diane, we have seen it back in the eighties or something.
Yeah.
But it's now, will be a part of our annual process of designating Arbor Days sometime in January or February. It's something that we've.
It's in April, it's in April. The last Friday in April.
Yeah, we've always, it's been designated the last Friday in April for as long as I've been here, but now, we're not changing the date, we're just required to do a resolution naming that every year.
So we have a motion and a second. I'll call, call the question.
Yep, if nobody else has any other comments. Misty, could you call the? Misty, could you call the vote please?
Diane.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you, uh item E, we're going into a public hearing. For a proposed application for Community Development Block Grant Public Facilities Program. Okay, so at this time before we go into the public hearing, I would like to get some comments first from our city manager, Mr. Wilkie. And then I believe we're gonna go to Dustin, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead Steve.
So uh, Community Development Block Grant, oh. Is a program that's done by the federal government. We received this block grant actually in the mid nineties as part of a revolving loan fund program related to Standish. And it was for five hundred thousand dollars, when Standish sold the Plainer, they paid that loan back and we for years have used. That revolving loan fund for businesses in the community. About three years ago, yeah, almost exactly three years ago, we got notice that we had to give that money back. There was one condition under which we didn't have to give the money back and technically we do have to give the money back and then they re-granted it to us. And that was if we used it for an LMI housing project. So we, we investigated several types of programs, um, most of the types of programs are generally. Uh developers who come in and apply for the credits and use our, our revolving, or our block grant to help them. Uh get in place some type of apartment building for LMI housing. But that was not what we were looking for, we were looking for a means of transitioning people from apartments to homes. And so what we proposed to do was essentially construct a subdivision. And then be able to provide those lots using this money uh at a, at a substantial discount or one dollar. And let them use that as their down payment in giving a loan, because what we found in Lake Mills that for sure and pretty consistent in Southeast Wisconsin is that. People are paying rents that are, is big if not bigger than a lot of mortgages. Uh but their problem is, is that they can't get the uh down payment to. Get the loan to buy a home, so this kind of helps them make that transition from one to the other. And then lets them build some equity and then be able to purchase their own homes or purchase other homes in the future and continue to move these on. We do not have any long-term interest in this, I think we have five years of interest in it and then after that it's, it's out, we, we don't control anything on it. It is financed by private lenders or um, it may use some USDA funds, but that's still mainly private lenders. The. Program is in a, um, helps people that are. Making a pretty decent income, so you can see um first and second year teachers, firefighters, beginning police officers. People who are, have good jobs in the industrial park, um, those types of people would have a, an opportunity to purchase these homes. They are um done in the traditional neighborhood design, which came out as part of our comprehensive plan project back in uh the early. Two thousand and ten time, um, it was a project that was pushed by the state. So it, it uh. Provides a, a pretty high quality housing um at, at a relatively marketable price, I'm not gonna say they're great. The other thing I want to say is, is that this is rather outside the box for the state and, and the feds. And um so even if we do move forward with this, um, we may end up not being able to do it because they, they just. They see us as having difficulty in meeting their requirements, which are. Not really designed for the type of project we're doing, we're kind of outside the box for them, we're kind of being creative in this program, so. I, that said, I'll turn it over to Dustin and he's got more background on it.
Uh thanks Steve, I also have Anna Felton uh on the call with us, uh she's a planner with our office and she's been assembling the materials and the application uh for this. Steve really hit a lot of the eye points, um, I'm gonna just kind of run through very quickly. Uh this presentation, which is the, generally the same one I gave uh to you a couple of weeks ago. It has been available online for the public uh to view over the last couple of weeks and of course it's there again today under um today's agenda items. There are just some key items that are highlighted in the um public hearing notice that we have to touch on. Right, the available potential funds, which is at five hundred and eleven thousand, what can we use it for, we can use it for a variety of things. But it's important to note that this is again money that you've already had, you're giving it back to the state and, and then asking for it back to, to undertake these. Very, I'll say, necessary projects in the city. Of the eligible projects, we are focusing on public facilities, as Steve said, um, it really is. For um developing a subdivision that doesn't really have a profit need, um, so it can, so lots can be made available uh at a lower cost or if not. Almost no cost to offset uh down payment requirements. The monies can be used for land acquisition, architectural cost, utility improvements, mostly infrastructure improvements. Listed here, street sidewalks, utilities, stormwater, et cetera, um, you can't actually use the money though to build the housing, so just an important distinction. The LMI, um, identified persons, um. Low moderate income means different things to different people, but the federal government in Jefferson County, a family of four that doesn't make more than sixty-one thousand dollars a year. Qualifies as low moderate income and as you can see for a family of two, it's forty-nine thousand um dollars. The caveat to any development that happens with this, there would be a five-year deed restriction that at least fifty-one percent of the total housing. Um units would be occupied by persons who qualify under the LMI designation, um, so it doesn't have to be all of them. But we certainly are targeting um more than fifty-one percent. Through here, we have some data on the fact that new housing stock is needed. Uh vacancy rates have been decreasing for homeowner and rental, uh there really isn't a lot of product out there for someone to transition from. Uh an apartment to a single-family uh home to own. So that's always been a challenge, just the costs have been a little prohibitive for them. One of the other issues is trying to minimize costs so people aren't home burdened, which means they don't spend more than thirty percent of their household income. On, on housing costs and uh as you can see, um, in Lake Mills. Twenty-seven percent of homeowners are cost burdened and twenty-eight percent of renters are cost burdened, that they're just paying too much. A, a larger proportion of their uh income towards housing than, than other um. Uh costs. The process here is pretty straightforward, here we're having the public hearing. By the end of the month, we have to submit the completed application, um, you can see there's a series of hearings tonight related to this application. And then the dollars have to be used by um twenty twenty-three, so we have two years uh to, to build the project. And to get homes constructed with meeting those criteria and provide that information to the state. We are also gonna be combining this with um a one-year affordable housing extension from TID number two, which is the industrial park TID. So leaving that open one more year, you had approved that uh about a month ago uh at the council level as well. As Steve said, we are targeting this seventeen acre site across from Wallace Park, south of the Light and Water Building that has been. Um not ideal for industrial development, um, because of uh some of the uh, the impacts, uh some of the environmental constraints out there. Uh it just hasn't been, um, obviously if somebody had wanted for something by now, it would have been used that way. Uh so it is land that has been controlled and paid for long since, um, with TID number two, so it is just vacant land uh controlled by the, by the uh city. As you can see, when you go uh east of Wallace Park, you have the Brookstone Development, to the northeast of Wallace Park is uh the Pond View Apartments. Um so really introducing single-family housing, here really isn't conflict anything to anything, obviously it's adjacent to uh employment opportunities. And uh the park and the daycare center is over there, so all quite proximate. Now, as Steve said, we're focusing on traditional neighborhood development and what does that mean? This is smaller footprint houses with um typically alley-loaded, shorter setbacks to the front yards, uh large porches. This is a product that you do have already in the city, um, it is located off of Lake Street, um, just to the north end of the industrial park, there's some Veridian homes that were built, oh, nearly fifteen years ago. Uh that, that qualify for this and traditional neighborhood development is what they would consider historic development around a, a historic downtown as well. So as you can see uh in the image to the left, we're showing um a, a variety of types that have. Uh an alley, uh and then facing, one's facing a park, the other's facing another roadway, uh this one is in Cottage Grove. Madison has been doing this, Milwaukee's been doing this for years, again, um, to have smaller footprint housing. To reduce costs and to open homeownership uh to, to uh, to a very important segment of society. Uh one of the key in Fitchburg have also been doing this, so I don't even think that this is just a large community issue, um, these are, this is a housing gap issue. Uh for many communities that they're, that they're trying to fill in unique ways. These are the typical houses that we would see, a twin home would be, um, think a townhouse owner occupied on each side and then traditional single-family detached. Uh the housing size is generally around fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred square feet, um, the housing cost is somewhere in the, the mid to high two hundreds. Um keeping in mind that uh there are no basements uh within these products, so uh that does keep costs down. Um but this is not low-income housing by any stretch of the imagination, as Steve said, the focus is on. Single-family attached and single-family detached housing, not apartments, which has been the traditional model uh that the state has um provided dollars uh for. Again, there will be alleys, um, that will be sixteen to twenty-four feet in width, uh there'll be streets that are about uh twenty-eight, twenty-nine feet wide, so it would enable parking on one side and then two travel lanes. Again, still very similar to what you would see in any other subdivision, uh nice street terraces, street lawns with um, uh wide sidewalks. As you can see, uh this is the development type that we're looking at, there is enough room, this is showing parking on both sides, probably be looking at parking on one side and then two travel lanes. And this is meant to, to slow traffic, uh it's supposed to be pedestrian friendly, um, there really isn't a need to go quickly through these neighborhoods. This is the development that we're looking at, we've gone through a number of iterations, uh this is a phased development, uh phase one is the focus here. Um on a long industrial drive, infrastructure obviously already in industrial drive, utilities are there, um, it would be stubbing laterals. Constructing of an alley, stubbing out some streets and constructing the uh stormwater management facilities. The lots are typically around uh four thousand uh square feet. As I said, the homes are around fifteen hundred square feet, they'd be alley-loaded, again, a lot of front porches, sidewalks, um, and facing the park. The, the, the point tonight is not approving necessarily the specific layout, um, but we do need to provide this for the application. Uh tweakings and such would happen at a later date as we move through the plating and engineering design process with strand. So that's it in a nutshell, as far as the process and the um, the kind of checking the boxes uh for, for utilizing these uh block grant monies.
I have a question.
Of course.
Would this development be something that someone who's currently living in a trailer home in town be able to apply for?
Absolutely, uh again, the, the really criteria here is um that you need to meet the uh income thresholds. That are, that are set out for Jefferson County by the federal government, um, and the, as Stephen indicated, the goal here is to line up. Uh good applicants with financial institutions and builders to construct these houses, the city really just. Wants to turn them over to someone and that would be their involvement, the city doesn't have a management responsibility, these would be like any other subdivision where the city would just take care of the infrastructure itself.
And, and again, the income requirements come to fifty-one percent of the units, so. Not all the units are gonna be in that LMI category. And. You're looking at this development, it's in phases, we wanna make sure we get through phase one. Which really involves the CBD G funds and then we'll move on from there.
So we would be building the infrastructure and. Providing the land. If I understand this correctly.
That is correct, and we have spoken with lending institutions, um, that the. Land donation, if you will, land still has a value and we expect it to be around forty thousand dollars per lot. That would be the down payment in essence for someone to, to take to the lender and to, to get the loan to construct, to, for a traditional mortgage.
I, I think we should allow this, council will have an opportunity to talk about it later, I think we should open it up to the public hearing.
Yep, exactly, that's. That's my thoughts on it also, so um I don't know if we have anybody online that would like to speak to this. Anybody online, folks? Okay, anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? We are in public hearing right now. Hey, we've got one person.
Hi, Carol Burrows, one six nine West Lake Park Place, I didn't really come to speak to this tonight. But I think it's such a wonderful opportunity for Lake Mills and it would be a shame to pass it up. I know that there are businesses in Lake Mills that have a hard time getting enough employees. Because having a home in Lake Mills so they don't have a long commute is always a position that they have to consider as the family. I hope it, it is something that we can offer them.
Thank you Carol. We're still in open session. Excuse me, we are still in public hearing open session, if anybody else would like to speak to this. Okay, hearing, hearing nothing, we will, we'll close this public hearing. And we will move on to the next public hearing, which is the proposed citizens' participation plan.
Before we do that, I still had a couple of questions, but we wanted to have the public hearing, so I wasn't able to ask them.
Uh yeah, don't we have?
There isn't a decision item on this particular public hearing.
There isn't a decision on that, yeah, you're right, well go ahead, go ahead Vicky.
Who makes a decision as to who gets to get a lot for a dollar? Um is, is, do they already have to be working with a financial institution in order to qualify to get one of the lots? Otherwise I envision this, uh, the lots, the lots could be all snapped up by, by people who are basically um. Building spec homes and um, yeah, as long as they stay under the fifty-one percent threshold, they could get away with doing that, but. That would defeat the whole purpose, so yeah, are there safeguards in place to make sure that the people that this is intended for actually get to benefit from it?
There is a second piece to this Vicky that is really going to be um kind of the process. by which the city vets applicants and awards a lot to someone. So the city of West Dallas, city of Milwaukee have been working through this for a number of years. We'll be leaning heavily on them for their experience. But there is a requirement that it is owner-occupied by someone who qualifies for at least five years. So I'm not worried about spec housing because you're going to have to live in it, right? That is one of the requirements. And the expectation is that the city will look at applicants and then put them with lenders. And you still do need to qualify for a mortgage, that is still an issue. So you're still going to have to have good credit and, you know, I'll say moderate or managed debt based on lending practices. So this isn't, you're getting a free house. This is you are getting the opportunity to work with a lender to build a house. And then again, we'll specify that a home has to be constructed within a certain amount of time because as you see, we have a deadline as well that we have to meet with the state.
Okay, so then before they actually take possession of the lot to use as their down payment, it's going to be contingent on that the financing's going to go through and that they are actually going to be able to purchase a home.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Is this an appropriate time to ask a question about the construction of the homes or is that at a later date?
I would say it's a later day unless you have a general question. Again, we are working with local builders on this who have expressed some excitement at this. Keep in mind, these are intended to be very nice entry-level homes. So high-end finishes are probably going to be unlikely.
What I'm looking at is, because I live in Brookstone and there's a, there's a lot of water in Brookstone, but I'm wondering what the water situation over in that particular part of Wallace Park homes would be like without a basement intact, how would that impact the foundation of these homes?
Well, there'll still be engineering requirements. There's going to be some fill brought in for certain lots. Again, there's a fair amount of engineering that still has to occur over there for the sites. And then, of course, looking at whatever foundation requirements, there'll still be a foundation. It's not just going to be a slab. And so those are just things that will get handled through the design-construction process.
I can tell you, there's a significant difference between this site and Brookstone in that Brookstone's built on limestone. This is built on a silt loam with a heavy sand base. So it's going to drain really well. The biggest problem that you would look at here would be flooding. But we have addressed that substantially with the industrial park construction. So if you look at the ditches around ditch 35 and the storage spaces in the area, plus what we will be building in the subdivision, flooding won't be a problem and groundwater won't be a problem in homes either.
Okay, thank you.
I had to bring up a question that I was thinking of. If somebody is assigned a lot and they aren't part of the LMI, are we making it a restriction that no basements go in there at all? Have we thought about that or if they aren't part of that load of moderating some?
We have thought of that.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, there cannot be basements there based on the utility grades and such. And the expectation is that they will not have basements.
I'm going to modify that a little bit, Dustin, in the fact that while the first phase could not have basements, some of the other phases could because there will be some adjustments with the lift station and that type of stuff. So while phase one is all going to be draining essentially straight across industrial drive and that sanitary sewer is relatively shallow, those homes won't have the capacity to have basements in them unless they're putting in grinder pumps, which could also be used. So saying that, as long as they're, even if the load of mod ones want a basement, there's the possibility of constructing it. The problem is with the load of mod ones is keeping the price target because I guess I just have a hard time viewing $250,000 to $280,000 as a low-income home.
It's not.
And so if we're, you know, and you're looking at no basement, when you add the basement, you're probably adding another $10,000. So while 49% of these homes don't have to hit that LMI, some of them do. And so that's probably going to be pretty consistent across the board, especially with those first, I think, what is it, Dustin, first 20 homes?
First 20, so 11 of them will have to be to LMI qualified persons.
Yeah, and those with the grinder pumps, that makes it even more expensive. So I imagine that at least 11 of the homes are going to be on slabs. The rest of them can have basements if they want them. It's kind of, but we're also going to look at their situation because, like you said, we don't want a bunch of people taking advantage of the lot.
Well, that's an important discussion, Steve, is that if you want to live there, but you don't qualify as LMI, that doesn't necessarily mean you get a lot for a dollar. That's going to be a discussion item for the council at a later date.
Yeah, we have to, we have to look at these things.
Yeah, I can't see giving folks property for $1 if they don't meet the LMI. That just, that doesn't make good sense.
And the goal here is not to compete with your existing home builders in the community. The goal is to provide a housing product that isn't being met elsewhere in the community, so.
I have another question, I'm sorry. You were showing that the houses were going to be, like Steve said, around $275,000, is that correct?
Those are the numbers that we've been seeing in other communities. We're still working with the local builders to see what they think the numbers would come out to be. But that's what's been happening in Sun Prairie, Wanakee and Milwaukee.
And those might be elevated due to the locations. I mean, those are higher-end locations than Lake Mills. However, my concern is $275,000 could easily get you a home, say like in Brookstone with loose, with a basement. So what's the incentive for someone to be able to buy a home in that particular location?
Down payment.
Okay.
That's the big issue. It's not that people can't afford a house somewhere else, it's that they don't have cash reserves for a down payment. That's always been the problem.
We have talked with local builders, so we know where loose is at. It's still going to be, the market has changed in the last couple of years and especially this year. Now, we're hoping that it kind of drops back a little because the cost per square foot of a house has just gone through the roof. When they came out with these prices and we started checking around and people were saying, yeah, that's pretty much what it is now, I was just shocked because I, you know, I don't remember Carol and Diane might remember when we originally started talking about this, we were talking 200 to 250, 250 to 280 was a pretty substantial jump in my mind. I'm hoping it's not going up anymore. But, you know, the homes that we've seen loose building in other areas in the last year have all been over $300,000.
Yeah, just since COVID started with all the building and all the stuff that's been going on, standard eight-foot-two-by-four went from like six bucks up to 34.
Wow.
Some products you can't even get anymore. I mean, you're waiting months for appliances.
All right, is there any other questions or comments on item E? We will have more chance to talk about that.
I have a question, comment. Yeah, I wanted to mention that I, believe it or not, was on the board of the original industrial park who bought the land for this land, this area. And one of the reasons we made this an industrial park is because the water table is right there. And we were real afraid that people would start building houses and then come to the city when they put in their basement and their basement flooded. So I think we have to have some protection. If we allow people to put in basements, we need to do some disclaimer in that deed or whatever we do that says, you will not come back to the city of Lake Mills to get money if your basement floods. Because that's why we put an industrial park there and not a development of homes. So that's, I really think we need to do that to protect the city.
Conditions have changed a lot since that time, Diane. First of all, building codes have changed on basements.
Okay, good.
And then the work that we did in the industrial park with all the stormwater drainage and then the conditions that we had in the foundation or the engineering that will go into that development, that won't be a substantial of an issue. And even if it is, it still doesn't fall back on us. It's a, when you decide to build that basement, you have to make sure that you're building that basement according to building codes that meet the conditions that you're building in. And there are a lot of homes, Arbor Creek, several of those homes are built below the groundwater table. And you just make sure that you got a some pump system in, it's set up right, that your foundation is taken care of right, and it handles it. So I'm confident that that won't be as much of a problem as people are concerned about. But, you know, we did look at and say, hey, keep the houses at as low a cost as possible. It might be necessary to have slabs rather than basements. And essentially, it works out easier for making sure the drainage works.
Are these available possibly to be like a rent-to-own situation?
That is not the expectation here. Again, the expectation is to line them up with a private lender to get a traditional mortgage.
This is an owner-occupied, that's what we're searching for here is to move people from renting into owner-occupied.
Okay.
Yep, the city is not trying to play banker, it's not trying to be landlord. It is trying to just make the entry into homeownership more available.
Okay.
Yeah, and a few folks really come to mind when I think about this. First and foremost, I believe we still require police officers to reside in the community. And I know that a lot of those that are just starting out are probably in that boat where they're going to be renting and that would be a great solution for them. Get some ownership into the community where they're working. So anyway, if there's nothing else on that, let's move on to the next public hearing, which is the proposed citizen participation plan. So we had a notice of public hearing regarding the proposed citizen participation plan in the city of Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Notice of public hearing is hereby given that the city of Lake Mills Council will hold a public hearing on January 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the city council chambers 200D Water Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin 53551 to receive public comment on the city of Lake Mills adoption of the proposed citizen participation plan. This public hearing will also be held virtually. All right, so before we open it up for public participation, is this, do you want to start with this, Steve?
No, I'm going to let Dustin and Anna handle this one. Probably Dustin, maybe Anna might be more important.
So again, this is a requirement of the application process and utilizing the funds that you must have an adopted citizen participation plan and a citizen participation committee. It is the expectation outlined here to use the city of Lake Mills Housing Committee, which meets all of the qualifications for the citizen participation plan committee. There'll be a hearing tonight and then as dollars or projects are undertaken, there would be a hearing as well for that. Standard notifications, et cetera. But this is, and I'll say an I-dotting, T-crossing requirement to utilize dollars. You had this when you got the revolving loan fund. There's some updated requirements associated with this from the revolving loan fund, which is why it's here tonight. Again, the goal here is to enable the public and residents to weigh in on the programs, the goals and objectives of the program, the use of dollars, and ultimately the council will make the final decision on use of dollars after receiving input from the public and the citizen participation plan committee.
Okay, with that being said, we are now in a public hearing. Do we have any comments from folks online? Hearing none, we'll move into the room here. Do we have any folks that would like to make any comments on the citizen participation plan in our public hearing? All right, seeing none, we are going to close that public hearing and we will move on to resolution 21-5. Nancy, could I get the title read, please?
Resolution 21-5, resolution to adopt a citizen participation plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion of adoption for resolution 21-5?
So.
Thank you, Doug. Is there a second? Thank you, Diane. Yeah, Diane said that, okay. All right, so is there any discussion that the city council would like to take right now? Trying to get into it, but I keep having network errors. I thought the plan, when I read it earlier today, mentioned that we would, the city council president would assign those folks, but it sounds like that plan has changed from what the actual documents said earlier.
Well, again.
Unfortunately, I can't get into it right now.
Okay, so it does say that they're appointed, but you already have a housing committee that meets this criteria that have already been appointed.
Who are they?
Right, no, and that makes sense, fine, it's just that's not what was spelled out in there. So it just took me by surprise.
The housing authority.
So what does the rest of the council think about that, assigning the housing authorities to this?
Who is on the housing authority? Because, and I'm not asking because I want to, you know, screen who is on it, but by what I'm seeing here in the program oversight is that it's supposed to be made up of people who represent the demographics. So does our housing committee do that?
This is Dan. The housing committee currently consists of five members, Teresa Rossi, Diane Fritch, Daniel Hunt, Margaret Belk, Gerald Ulsterich. It's the housing authority. I don't, I'm not so sure that it meets the criteria for this. It may have to be either amended or changed or a new committee could be formed.
What are the criteria for it?
The criteria for the committee are outlined in the attachment that you've received. It's a three-page document.
I wasn't thinking about it.
So it says this committee must include at least one LMI person as well as representatives from the local government, real estate, banking, labor communities whenever possible.
Well, that we have covered.
And your housing committee does include a resident of the.
Yeah, they do.
Yes, so you meet that criteria as well.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the. Yeah, I'm pretty sure the housing authority meets the requirements that are in there. It's a little bit, I don't know about labor, that might be one, but we've always had a problem getting a representative of labor on, on the committee. So that was one that we, you know, that's an appointment of mine, and I've always tried to meet all the requirements, but that labor one has just been really tough.
What kind of person do you need for a labor community person?
Well, they generally have to be in some form of labor work. So someone that works at one of the business, of the industrial units in the business park, someone who works in construction. One of those types of, it has to be what's considered a general labor.
Could be a plumber, carpenter, that kind of thing.
Could be. Yep. Still specialized trades still qualify. Most of the construction trades are specialized trades, but that works.
They're probably really busy.
Well, we've had retired ones on there over the years.
Yeah. I still think it should be somebody that's currently working and feeling the pain of things that-
We had, Mr. Samp was on the board for many years.
Historically, it's been a, the appointment up for labor has been a, a retired city employee, that's true.
All right. So my take on this is we might meet some of the requirements with that housing authority, but I don't think that this resolution says we have to pick them right now. So if we pass this resolution, it leaves it up to me to work with the city staff to find the right mix and then bring it before the council for approval. Does that sound right?
I'm comfortable with that.
But, uh, it's going to stay with the state, will Keith be the appointee?
Well, it depends on how we do it.
Yeah. According to what the plan says, it's supposed to be, where does it say it here? The chief elected official.
Oh, okay.
And then confirmed by the City of Lake Mills City Council. But it would be in conjunction with the city manager, city attorney, and then we would bring that back forth at a future meeting for approval by the rest of the council.
There could be- Could, could there be overlap with the groups? Like if there was somebody at Rock Lake Manners Board that wanted to be in, they could be on board?
Yes, we could probably do a combination where we use the housing authority. We just get an, an extra member on or something that, that Mike, that Mike designates that as the housing committee rather than the housing board. We'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can make that happen before, well, I'm not going to say before the next meeting because we have to ask for, we have to look at what we have, and then we have to ask for other applicants.
I, I don't want to get too excited either.
This is not going to be, yeah, this, this won't be until probably the late or the earliest, the second meeting in February before we can bring anything back.
Yeah, I, I would like to make sure that we get the, that we at least have a pretty good idea of where that grant is at. If we're not going to get it, I don't want to start getting too excited about it.
Yeah. Can we start with focusing on using the housing authority as it exists? And as you said, supplement it with additional persons? Just so we, so you are naming a committee for right now?
All right. Well, yeah. You don't-
Uh-oh.
Hey Dustin, can you mute?
Too many birds in the room, guys.
Dan, can you mute?
Yeah, there it is.
There we go. Thanks, Dan.
Uh, we're technologically challenged tonight.
Well, I think, I would think that would work because I, I think if, if we pass, they would be willing to serve in that role until such time that the city figures out exactly what they want. But I, I don't think everybody that's currently on the housing authority board of directors would really want both jobs. They've, they're, they've got, some just are happy with what they have. So I'm just, that's what I'm-
And, and right, yeah. And right now, the only thing we really have to do is adopt the plan. According to what the resolution is, we just need to adopt the participation plan, then we can build the, the participation team.
But I think Dustin's saying that we need to have a team, right? Dustin?
Uh, the expectation is, I'm sorry, can you hear me? The expectation is that you are naming a committee as part of the application. So again, I'd asked that we use the housing committee as it exists now, and that it be supplemented in the future.
Is that for the 31st deadline?
Yes.
Sorry, with me? Yeah. Yeah, I, I, you know, I have reservations about putting somebody on there, just to put them on there, just so we have something without going through the process.
Again, my-
Diane will be on the same-
My fear is if we don't do this, then we may as well not continue with the rest of the night.
And, and my only concern is, is, and I think I agree with Mike, you know, we can't guarantee that the people on there want to serve in another capacity. But there's nothing that's stopping us from just saying, we're going to do this, and then we'll talk to the people that are on it and see, and see if we meet the criteria, the right groups of people. But, you know, that's all I was saying.
And by the time we get the grant, we can, we can move and change it to what, what we, what Mike is looking at. I, I think just in the interim, to give us something to work with, we can designate that, and then we can come back and change it. We could change it within a week.
Right. Right.
The, the problem we've always historically had is finding members to serve on this.
Well, and we haven't even told Steve Pierce, who's the director of the housing authority over there. So I mean, we do have to let him know what we're talking about.
And you know, the title, the title of this committee, if posted in like the leader, might even have a different connotation than what its intent is. So we may get a bunch of people who want to be part of this for a different reason. So we need to keep that in mind as well.
Yeah. And on top of this, top of that is, you're looking at the resolution. Basically, it's just saying that we adopt a citizen participation plan. Nowhere in there does it say we have to name them. It just says, create, look to create one, or encourage citizen participation. So I don't think naming one or not naming one right now would stop us from passing this resolution if this is the resolution that's being part, uh, put in as part of the package. Or are you want, or do you require us to make an amendment?
So, Mr. Foster, again, the, the supplemental information that we provided that's in the participation plan says, the city shall create a plan committee, members of which will be appointed by the chief elected officer, official and, and appointed. Our issue is, it wasn't clear from the state whether or not that needed to be in place with this participation plan or later date.
Right.
There is not an immediate need for them to do anything at this juncture. I would feel more comfortable that if the state asks us, did we, you know, do we have a committee? At least at this point, we have the housing committee, which has been tasked with housing in the City of Lake Mills. And if we change it in the future, great, but for now, it would be better to have something named.
Yeah. And like I said, I have reservations with doing that for a committee that's already stood up. And I don't believe their mission is, at least, unless I'm wrong, is, is part of their mission low to moderate income housing validation, verification, and committees? Is that truly what they're-
Yeah, that's what we do. It's all low in housing.
Yep. It's, it's a hundred percent low to mild.
Yeah.
Okay. So that is, I don't have any problems with that.
Yeah.
My understanding is they were part of the, um, uh, what's it called?
Rock Lake Manor Housing Project.
Rock Lake Manor, yeah. And that's what their jobs were primarily, was to manage the Rock Lake Manor and to make the adjustments and changes for the Rock Lake Manor.
They do do that, but the Rock Lake Manor is a low to moderate income facility. So part of primary, part of their primary job is to review and make sure they're meeting that goal.
Right. But was it assigned because we have that building? And if we expand their duties now? I'll go along with whatever the rest of the council thinks.
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
Yeah. I think it's fine, too. I only brought up what I brought up as a courtesy to the people that are on the Rock Lake Manor board, that, to make sure that people understand that they may not want to be in both capacities. But they certainly would be very good in both, but not, not everybody wants to be on two committees, you know?
All, all we're doing is designating it tonight. If we, at the next council meeting, we actually then designate another committee, hey, that works.
So, okay. I think it's fine.
All right. So at this point, with us, uh, if we adopt Resolution 21-5, it will name our housing authority as the citizen participation plan members as it stands right now. Any other comments? All right. Let's call the roll call vote then, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Uh, there is a housing authority board meeting next week. I could call Steve Pierce tomorrow and ask him to modify the agenda so that we could at least mention this at the board meeting. Is that okay with you all?
Yeah.
You know, does anybody object to that?
Nope.
Steve Wilkie, is that okay with you?
It's fine with me. I, I'm, we'll talk to Mike tomorrow to make sure that if we want to modify it, that, that we can get that done.
Do you want to talk to him tomorrow?
I'll talk to Mike Foster, and then if, if, depending on what we decide, I'll, I'll talk to Steve Pierce, let him know.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. That's perfect. Hey, Steve, if you can find the housing authority charter for me, and just send me a link in my email for it, so I can review that, that would be beneficial for me. Okay. I am moving into another, another public hearing, and this is a proposed policy to prohibit the use of excessive force and the barring of entrances, exits for nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. Who's going to start us out on this one, Steve?
This is a requirement of the federal government as part of the CBDG. And it's not, it's kind of redundant because we're not allowed to use excessive force anyways, but I asked Mick Self to be here tonight. So I think Mick's in the crowd there. If he wants to step up to the, the computer there and talk about what he sees. I know that we had to modify our use of force policies this year once already. This is a slight change that I, I don't believe makes a significant amount of difference. I know people are worried about civil rights demonstrations. The second it becomes violent, so if they're breaking a window in City Hall, that's not violent. If they attack somebody, that's not violent. If they start running people over, that's violent. This is a nonviolent civil rights protest. Normally, where are we going to see this? I don't know, but I, I feel, I feel comfortable with this change, and I asked Mick to speak to it himself.
Okay. I think he's ready.
All right. Good evening. Basically, I had an opportunity to review the document you provided, and Steve hit it right on the head. We have never had the ability to use excessive force. We faced consequences, both criminally and civilly, for exceeding our mandates in that regard. So, yeah, to some degree, that is exactly what our mandate has always been. And then we recently submitted our use of force policy, which is also mandated to a certification agency, and our use of force policy did come back ad certified. And so that is part of the city records, and is part of your package tonight. I believe you also received a copy of our use of force policy. If you guys have any questions on that, I would happily address that. In regard to civil rights protests, I did meet with some people just before coming to the podium tonight, and, you know, their concern, I think, was that it addresses only civil rights protests. And basically, you know, we treat all protests the same. People have the right under the First Amendment to protest, and we fully intend to allow them to do that as long as it remains nonviolent. If people are getting their properties damaged, we need to, to step in and maybe deal with a couple individual people, we'll do that. But again, excessive force is, is not in the, not in our mandate, and is not part of our policies. So we use the force that we're legally justified to use. Our training programs are set up through the Department of Justice, the Training Standards Bureau, they're hot statewide. And so they undergo rigorous scrutiny, especially after, you know, the year we had in 2020. And we follow all, all the guidelines of the state with them, and then they're incorporated into our policies. So I, as chief, don't see any problems that would result as, in regard to passing this resolution. It does not tie our hands in any way. So I, I do kind of consider it to be almost a formal. Correct. You know, after the George Floyd incident, we went and looked through all of our use of force policies. We made some updates with contemporary training and thought processes, and made a few modifications. And the September version is the most latest version. And the September version is the most latest on the version. And, uh, again, it's, it was certified and we received the certification just after the first of this year. So it's that, that recently certified. So I don't know if there are any questions from the group?
I'm going to interrupt. Can we get whoever is not muted to please?
Any questions from the council that I can help them?
Anybody have any questions? It looks like this was, uh...
I have one question. I'm not clear and I just missed it. Why, why are we doing this tonight? Where did it come from?
It's part of this process, Diane, for getting the grant. The feds always tie a bunch of items together with it. And generally, when you're looking at, uh, LMI housing, this is an issue.
Oh, it's part of that. Yeah, 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 I knew that. Okay. Doesn't seem to make much sense why that would be tied together, but, okay, thank you.
So, and, and just to be clear, the requirement under this resolution is that Section 104 L1 of Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 is contemplated and including, concluded in the, uh, excessive force, uh, policy that our, our PD has.
So in other words, it's not changing anything?
Well, I don't see where that's adopted by our policy.
I, I have no problem making an addendum to our policy, um, if, if that's a requirement.
Do we need to amend it?
The policy itself may need to be amended. The resolution says you're adopting that, that, uh, that specific clause, Section 104 L1 of Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended.
Which, which doesn't require an amendment tonight. It would look at, we would look at Mick's use of force policy and he would be able to add it.
Correct.
Yep, so we're, we're still in public hearing.
There's a lot.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Hold on, we're still in public hearing.
Okay.
We'll, we'll ask our questions in a minute here. Let's see if anybody else in the public has anything to say. Anybody, uh, in the audience? Doesn't look like it. Nobody online? All right, so we're going to close this public hearing. Uh, we can move into Resolution 21-6. Can I get that title read, please?
Resolution 21-6, Revolution to Adopt the Policy to Prohibit the Use of Excessive Force and the Barring of Entrances, Exits for Nonviolent Civil Rights Demonstrations.
Hey, uh, do we have a motion of adoption for 21-6?
So.
Thank you, Doug. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, so we have Resolution 21-6, um, on the docket right now. And we are open for discussion, conversations on this. This brings us back to the item that was brought to our attention by the city attorney. Um, and I'm reading through this. And it says, whereas Section 104 L1, the Title One of the Housing Authority Development Act of 1974 is amended, uh, prohibits the state from expending or obligating any community development block grants. So we have to make sure that the policy, that the policy complies with that section. So is correct that, um, we need to make sure that information is in there? And is, is that the four bullets that you outlined in particular?
What, what I believe, my contention on what would be missing in our policy compared to, um, Section 104 L1 is the concept of, um, physically, not physically barring entrance or exit from a facility or location which is subject to such nonviolent civil rights protests. That, I, it, number two, under the section that I just cited, um, the Housing Act, is basically it requires a policy of enforcing applicable state and local laws against physically barring entrance to or exit from a facility or location, which is the subject of such nonviolent civil rights demonstration within its jurisdiction. So I think that's the language that's missing from the policy.
And that's Mick's policy, not the resolution?
Correct.
And Mick can correct.
And the resolution itself does state that we can amend our policy or adopt our policy.
So we just asked, Mick's already said he was willing to do that.
Correct.
And, uh, just to be clear, in case it matters, we actually have a separate, um, crowd control policy that is currently being amended anyway. And I think that language fits better into that policy than the use of force policy. Not that it matters. I can't hear a word.
The only problem with that is the resolution requires that it's in the excessive force policy, federal mandate, if you're, if you're going to be eligible for the funds.
Sure.
So.
I can do that.
Okay, so we're open for discussion right now on this. Um, it does sound like we are going to have to, uh, review the current policy and make some amendments to it. Is there anything else in this resolution that any other city council member has questions on? No. So with, with that being said, how, what, what is the thought? Do we, does anybody want this tabled until we see that language? Which may put us in a, a bind to get the, the grant out on time? Or do we want to, uh, adopt this? And then have the policy come back before us as a discussion item to make sure it says what we expected it to say?
I think the latter, what you just said, Mike.
Well, and I'm not sure that either is necessary. If you adopt the resolution, it, it's, it explicitly states that the policy will adopt Section 104 of the Act. So I, I think it's administrative at that point. If you adopt the resolution, it gives clear direction to your administrator of the police department to amend his resol, or his policy to include that section of the Housing Act.
That's, I agree with that.
And that's up, that's up to the rest of, uh, council members, what they, what they think about that. I always go by the old adage, if you expect, you inspect. So if you want to see it, which I would like to just have it dropped before us for a discussion item to make sure it covers it.
I would, I agree, Mike.
Yep, we can put that on.
I don't think it's necessary.
No? What about you, Diane?
I don't think it's necessary. I think we can, uh, trust our staff to do the right wording in there.
Okay.
I'm with Vicky and Diane. I agree that they can put the right wording in there.
Okay.
Could they, could, could they maybe, um, just send us by text, you know, email, a copy? And, I mean, it doesn't mean we meet about it, but.
Yeah, they can do that or we can just get confirmation notice when it's done.
Yeah, I mean, but I think we need to move, get it moving and not miss the deadline.
Got you. Okay, we will go with that then. So is there any other questions or comments on Resolution 21-6? Hearing none, let's call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Did you say mister?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yep, she said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Ms. Quinno?
Yep.
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
All right, thank you, Misty. Uh, Item J, Public Hearing Proposed Fair and Open Housing Ordinance, Public Hearing. The wifi keeps dropping. All right.
Doesn't like public hearings.
Oh. Yeah, it doesn't like public hearings, something doesn't like them. Uh, who, who is on the docket to discuss this, Steve, before we jump into public hearing?
I think Dustin and Dan.
Okay, Dustin, would you like to start?
Uh, again, this is a, a situation where, um, we are required to adopt a fair housing ordinance, which is something that should have been on the books with having a housing authority as well, um, to have the CDVG funds. We are, um, recommending that you adopt the state legis, the, the statutes from the legislature relating to, uh, fair housing. Um, and really, in essence, it just makes discrimination in housing unlawful. And I'm sure Dan could provide a little more background or, or alleviate any other, uh, questions related to that, but...
Yeah, frankly, I'm, would you mind muting those, Mr. Foster? That might help me. Thank you. Um, frankly, I'm surprised that it hasn't been adopted either. Wisconsin Statute 106.50 is the open housing law in the state of Wisconsin. That is a federally, um, uh, a beast that was made federally and has, uh, basically spread throughout all of the states. Um, it does, um, restrict the ability to discriminate in housing. Um, it does create some, some burden on, um, local enforcement and, uh, collection of data if we are to adopt a local ordinance. And that is outlined in the, um, resolution that's in front of you. Um, it, it appears that our only obligation is to collect and distribute complaints. But from there, it, it is really, um, a deep protection that's in place with regard to, um, protecting against discrimination in housing. There is a, a state statute that is already applicable in the area. This would be a local ordinance that's adopting the state statute. I did provide the state statute for your review. Um, there is a ton of information there. Um, if there are questions, we can discuss. But I, I, I mean, I, there are, there are some pitfalls with regard to fair housing generally. But from the city's standpoint, I, I don't see those concerns.
So we didn't have anything like this before? Or we don't have?
Surprisingly, I could not find a previous adoption of fair housing law in the city of Lake Mills. Um, the statement with regard to the operation of Rock Lake Manor and our housing authority, um, I believe should have triggered the adoption of this previously.
It should have, and that historically, whenever we've had any of these types of debates, I've always been told we had it, but when it came time to find it, I could not find anything. Dan couldn't. I just don't know where it ended up.
It, it's not codified currently in our code. Um, I would suggest upon adoption, we locate an area where 106.50 of Wisconsin statutes can be codified in our code. Um, and it can be as simple as fair and open housing as a section. Um, the city hereby adopts 106.50 Wisconsin statutes as amended.
Can we also put the housing authority in there somewhere?
Well, I think that's a, a great idea. Building a section of our ordinances that contemplate, um, such actions is, is completely appropriate. The other thing that is largely missing from our, our ordinances as they're currently drafted is, um, language, definitions and such regarding the housing authority as well as Rock Lake Manor.
My guess would be, given how things historically occurred in the city government, is way back when the housing authority was created, they may have done it by resolution and that's why it didn't show up codified within the code.
Yeah, and I, I think that's probably correct.
But it's best to have, oh, yeah, it's best to have it in the code.
It was, it was passed in 1968.
Yeah, it was before my time.
Mine too.
Okay.
I think Vicky is right though. I, I bet it's there.
All right. Was there anybody else going to mention anything before we open up for the public hearing? All right, so we're, we are open for public hearing right now. There's anybody online? Make it known if you want to speak. Being none, we'll go to the audience. And it doesn't look like we have anybody that is going to speak here either. So we will close the public hearing. And we will move on to Ordinance 1222, Fair and Open Housing, first reading. Uh, we need to read that thing in full. Now, Steve, can you go ahead and read that thing in full?
Ordinance 1222, Fair and Open Housing Ordinance, adopting Wisconsin Statute 106.50, Open Housing. The City Council, the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, does ordain as follows. Fair and open housing ordinance, whereas the City Council, the city of Lake Mills, recognizes its responsibilities under Wisconsin Statute 106.50 as amended and endorses the concepts of fair and open housing for all persons and prohibition of discrimination therein. Now therefore be ordained that adoption of Wisconsin Statutes 106.50, Open Housing, A, state statutes adopted, the City Council, the city of Lake Mills hereby adopts Wisconsin Statute 106.50 as amended and all subsequent amendments thereto. B, authority and enforcement procedures implemented. The officials and employees of the city of Lake Mills shall assist in the orderly prevention and removal of all discrimination in housing within the city of Lake Mills by implementing the authority and enforcement procedures set forth in Wisconsin Statute 106.50 as amended. C, complaints. The city clerk shall make new forms for complaints to be filed under Wisconsin Statute 106.50 as amended and shall assist any person alleging a violation thereof in the city of Lake Mills to file a complaint thereunder with the Wisconsin Department of Workforce Development, Equal Rights Division for Enforcement of Wisconsin Statute 106.50 as amended. D, effective date, this ordinance is effective and shall be given full force and effect upon passage and publication as provided by law.
All right, thank you, Misty. Um, I am making the assumption, this is all part of our, uh, product that we have to produce for the 31st deadline. And I'm making the assumption that someone is going to request that we bypass the second reading and move on to third reading. that we bypass the second reading and move on to third reading. Um, does anybody have that, that comment? Is that what we're hoping to have happen, Steve or Dustin?
Yes, we need that to happen, because this ordinance has to be passed before we file on the 31st. So, if we could get someone to move, to move this to the third reading, we'd, we'd make a...
So moved. I'll move that.
So Doug is recommend...
Yeah, Doug is going.
We bypass the second reading and move to the third reading tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, let's go ahead and call the roll call vote on that, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero?
Okay, that moves us on to the third reading tonight for this. Could I get that title read again, please?
Ordinance 1222, fair and open housing ordinance, adopting Wisconsin statute 106.50 open housing.
So, or we, we need a motion, right?
No, no, at this point, at this point, we need a red, the resolution, you need to move resolution 21-8. Is that correct?
Seven?
Or seven, yes, 21-7. It's a little bit more formal than a motion. The resolution is kind of the, a more formal adoption of the ordinance than the resolution, and it's required by the...
But, but don't we have to vote on the third reading?
We, we still have to do the third reading.
Yes, okay, yep, you're right.
Do we need another motion for the third reading?
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, I make a motion to approve ordinance 1222, fair and open housing, third reading.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, is there any other conversation on this before we pass this? It's basically getting state, Wisconsin state statutes 106.5 into our, um, our ordinances to make sure we're following it. Hearing nothing, let's call the vote on this, please, Misty.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt? Motion pass five zero?
Aye.
Now we can move on.
Okay, now you're, resolution 21-7?
Now we can move on to res- 21-7. Ah, shoot, my wifi jumped out again.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion.
Let's get a red first.
Resolution 21-7, resolution to adopt a fair housing ordinance.
I would make a motion to approve resolution 21-7.
Second.
Who was the second? Was that Vicky? Okay, thank you, Vicky. Uh, let's see here, I can open it up over here and think on this one. So many computers and can't get any of them to work right. Okay, so while we did, we did adopt, uh, the re- the ordinance, excuse me, can't read this right. This is the resolution to adopt, uh, fair housing ordinance, and we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion that you would like to bring up on this one? Hearing nothing, let's go ahead and call the roll call vote on 21-7.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero?
Thank you, um, moves us on to, uh, item, do, 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 item M. Resolution, authoriz- uh, resolution 21-8, authorizing resolution to commit other funds. Can I get that title read, please?
Resolution 21-8, authorizing resolution to commit other funds.
Okay. The motion of adopted, 21-8.
So moved.
Thank you.
Diane.
Diane, is second?
Second, Vicky.
Now, what does it mean?
All right. So, what's this telling me? Well, in order to get the grant, we have to show that we have funds that are required in order to get the grant. That's, that's what this is telling me.
That's correct.
That you have a fin- that you're going to commit other dollars, in essence.
Right, exactly.
And you want to know where those funds are coming from?
For the TID.
Yes, and the existing land that we already own. So, there's a contribution in that, and then there's the contribution from TID number two. So, we have about, we'll have probably close to a million dollars of additional contribution.
But, that money, that million dollars, at least some of that, we wouldn't get to keep if we weren't using it, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's meant for that district, so, yeah.
I mean, the reason I say that is because you hear what was said, and you don't know what it means. It sounds like we just spent a whole bunch of money. Am I, yeah, where I'm going here?
Reality, we are.
We have. We have spent at least close to a million dollars, but it's all coming from, um, existing funds.
That's what I'm trying to say, that, 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 that didn't come out with the original resolution, so. It's not coming out of tax dollars that, you know, people...
Exactly. Well, it is, but it isn't. It's not coming out of the homeowners' tax do- tax dollars, it's coming out of the TID.
Right, but, and if we don't do this, the state's going to recall it, right? Isn't that true?
The, the community block grant.
Yes, that money.
Yes, yes, they'll recall that, yes. Uh, let's see here, is there any other questions on this one? Does this make sense to everybody?
Yep.
This is just part of the, part of the package that we have to say we have these funds available in order to be eligible for the grant. So, hearing nothing, we will call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt? Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero?
All right, thank you. Uh, item N, resolution 21-9, um, authorization to submit community development block grant public facilities program application. So, this is the actual application that we're sending in.
Correct.
Um, I've, I've already read the title, so I don't think we need to rewrite the title. This is basically telling the folks that this is what we want to do with that money if we are given that money back, which we're proposing them to be called Wallace Park Homes in the city of Lake Mills, and to be used for low to moderate income housing for at least 51% of the housing. Is there anything else that the council should be aware of on this?
Um, there, there's just a second piece of this that talks about the anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. Again, this is a requirement. Um, so, this is one of those things that would generally apply to an existing low and moderate income housing development. Um, it doesn't necessarily apply in this situation, because you're not relocating anybody or impacting anybody in existing low, moderate income housing. Um, so, uh, it talks about, you know, not changing codes that would make it challenging or difficult on low, moderate income housing, existing housing, uh, owners or tenants. Um, well, the building codes, the housing codes are all by the state anyway, they aren't, they aren't local. Um, that you wouldn't undertake any rehabilitation of apartment units, well, we're not doing any, um, apartment units, um, that if there's needs for existing counseling, um, we will work with Jefferson County Housing Authority or Housing Group on that. Um, so, again, these are the, uh, kind of items related to, uh, or commitment to anti-displacement and relocation.
The displacement will be squirrels, bunny rabbits, and mice.
Okay, Michelle's house.
Yeah.
Not sure about the mice.
Might be some snakes in there, too.
You might want to be wary of coyotes, there's quite a few of them over there.
There is. I hear them all night long.
Yep.
Uh, let's see here. We are looking for a motion to adopt 21-9, so it can be signed and put as part of the package to request the grant.
So moved.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Diane. Is there any other discussion that any of the city council members would like to have on this?
Um, do we need the number of the resolution on the resolution?
I actually can't...
Well, it's really the application.
I have a copy.
Okay, so, I just thought I'd ask. I didn't know if it mattered.
Oh, it's on the second page.
Yeah, it's 21-9.
Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I see it. Didn't look for it there.
Yep, perfect. Yeah, yeah, normally look right at the top, right?
Yeah, right, I didn't even give that a thought.
I'll let be instead. Let's call the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Diane?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero?
Okay, item 10, recommendations for future agendas. Uh, we've talked about some, I don't know if there's... Is there anything right on the next agenda that we know of right now?
Uh, we're going to have an executive session, hopefully, um, related to a claim. Uh, we also have, uh, information that'll be provided on, uh, composting, staffing, fees, industrial park, sandy beach. Anything else you want to talk about?
Were we planning on staying all night?
Again?
Sounds like a heavy duty agenda.
So, uh, one thing that we will talk about here in the near future, I, I was able to get the, uh, logo...
Oh, yeah.
...questionnaire, I was able to get it built, get it out there, um, but the sign-up process is a little, a little strange. So, I am going to work with the Polco folks to make sure I have a, uh, how to document or diagram or something for folks before we send this thing out. Um, knowing computers as well as I do, it was frustrating for me to figure out how I was, as a citizen, coming in to answer these polls. So, there's a couple of questions I have to, uh, get answered from the Polco folks, but just so you know, I do have the poll set up, so we can actually, um, make that known either by, uh, one of the Facebook sites out there or some other means to get our polling questions out there to the, to the citizens. The primary question will be, uh, based around the new logo, and then there's a couple of other questions on there, just some basic questions, um, because it's a requirement to have more than one question on there. So, I will keep you guys updated on that, and hopefully we can get this stuff working out there quick. I, I have seen that our police chief has been using it and testing it and playing with it quite a bit, so hopefully we can get some of this poll stuff working out there, so we can actually get a little bit more, um, uh, access to the citizens so they can answer questions and, and, uh, give their input into things that we're talking about on the council. So, that's all I got. Anything else?
Sounds good.
All right, then...
By the way, um, I would like to thank Dustin and Stacy, was it?
Anna.
Anna, I'm sorry, I'm bad with names. Uh, both of them for the work along, along with Steve and everybody for getting all the loose ends for, uh, the slow income housing. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you for your, uh, commitment tonight, it was a lot.
Yeah, it was. Let's not do it next week. Next time.
All right, um, Michelle, enjoy the parksport tomorrow, and for the rest of us, we are adjourned.